So, now being 5:45, I'll call the October 16th meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectment Order. First item on our agenda is Updates and Discussion, and this is Jake Breaks Signage Selection and Implementation. So this is something that we started working on, gosh, I think in maybe September, and we have some input as to potential signage slogans, so that's what we're here to talk about, and then how we go about making this happen. So you've all seen the list.
My feedback would be that we shouldn't have too many words. You can't see it from a distance. It should be something that truckers can see at a good, you know, good fair piece. So I would limit it to like six, seven words.
Okay.
Whatever we do. So when I was going through, I scratched anything that was...
Too long?
Too long.
Okay.
Just because it wasn't bad, it was just...
Well, we can get rid of "please," and we could probably shorten some of the words.
The only thing I would say...
I don't care, I just would like us to do it.
The only reason I put "please" is it's not legal.
No, but you could still say "don't."
Yeah, you can, but...
I had "please" too. I had "please" on all of mine, and then, but if we don't have enough space for it, I'm willing to cut the "please."
You know, sometimes when you see the sign...
Right to it!
And they have the "please" as like...
That's what John had suggested.
John suggested smaller, yeah, like maybe seven words or less.
That's what I suggested.
So I totally...
Yeah, the "please" in the corner, I like that.
I totally respect that. And, you know, five maybe comes closer. I think the "please" is important because it implies...
Asking or request?
Request.
Okay.
You know, respectful request, and it's non-adversarial. In truth, I like number 11 the best because it goes even further than that, but it is a lot of words. We had talked about maybe like two or three signs, so that if there were more words...
Well, you could, you could get rid of "truckers" because Jake Breaks just applies to "truckers."
That's true.
That's kind of self-evident.
Yeah.
And maybe put "please" in the corner, and then, "respect Plimpton neighborhoods," and then, "limit Jake Break use." Just get rid of a couple of the little words.
So then, it's...
Could I ask what you're looking at?
Yeah, it's, here, let me give you the list to...
Would you like me to make some copies?
It's, yeah, the list of, yeah, could you make a copy? And I've got an extra one.
We solicited.
I think that's good. Two signs, the first one, whatever words, "please respect Plimpton." If we could get "neighborhoods" in there, that adds a, that adds a little twist.
Yeah.
We're a small residential town, we are not the throwaway for saying gravel everywhere.
Well, we don't have to have just one sign either, we can have multiple signs.
John's suggestion there, you could even change "neighbors" to "neighborhoods," but I, I like that. I think that's simple, and it still has the "please," but it's off to the side a little bit. We also know that that size works, because that's similar to what they have when you exit the Upland Club.
This is "please, no Jake breaks, respect our neighbors."
Is, instead of "no," is it "limit Jake breaks"?
One in Carver says "no Jake breaks," that's all they say.
That's the ones in my hometown too, that just says "no Jake breaks."
I mean, the thing is, you know, there's sort of the implication that maybe that's the law, and it isn't the law.
It says "please," I mean, do you think "limit" instead of "no" is a better play on words?
You're probably beating a dead horse. If everyone can live with that, I can live with it. I like the "respect" piece, I like the "please" piece.
But let's not maybe necessarily put all our eggs in one basket, maybe we could do a couple different signs.
And maybe that one could be two signs. "Please, no Jake breaks, respect our neighbors."
Yeah, we could do that.
Or "respect our neighborhoods."
Yeah.
"Respect our neighborhoods."
Yeah, okay.
How big are these signs around? I mean, how are you gonna put them?
Are you familiar with the Upland sign, as you leave the, as the club?
Just the street ones?
Yeah.
It's similar to that.
I took it right off there, and I just inserted the language.
Because in the traffic code, there's different colors represent different degrees of what you can do and what you can't do. So you may want to look at that, because, you know, it's an information type sign rather than a caution or a street one.
Right.
It is a information sign, basically, because the Department of Transportation has already said that it's not illegal to use them.
Right.
Mark, if you can see in the hallway where it says, up against the wall under the mailbox is the hand sanitizer sign, that's similar to the size of the one when you exit the Upland Club.
Yes, that, that's...
Is that sort of what you were thinking of? Okay.
Probably.
Yeah, I like that.
I think we just settle on, let's go.
Let's just do it.
Okay. Want me to reach out to Robbie and get some made up?
We can always tweak it later, we can add more signs later.
How many would you like him to get made for now?
One on every corner.
So you need entrances all the numbered roads?
Entrances to numbered roads.
We ought to at least take a look at the people who came, and make sure that we're...
Addressing some of their stuff. I know that there were concerns off of Mayflower was a concern, Prospect was a concern, Spring Street...
Yeah, Prospect, Spring, yeah, those as well.
I would assume Center Street where the old term...
I would say Center Street too.
Yes.
And then we see how it goes.
Maybe any road that feeds into the numbered roads, you know, the bigger ones.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can go around with Robbie too, once they come in. So, I mean, do you think maybe if he gets eight of them made up?
I think that would be plenty.
You think that's plenty?
So far...
I think that's enough for now.
Okay, all right.
You think?
See what happens? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Can I ask which one you picked? I had stepped out, John's...
It's that, but with neighborhoods.
Respect our neighborhoods.
Okay. That's good, that gets the message across.
Yep, let's see if we get any traction.
So number 12.
Okay.
You can have this...
Are we gonna make that one sign, or divide it into...
Do you want me to send you a copy?
Um, I can, actually, can I take that, and I'll just show, I'm just gonna go over it with Robbie. I think just one sign, just like that.
So it's gonna be, what, double-sided? So you can see it from both sides?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we should.
You do that when you mount it, you're not gonna...
You've gotta make sure though, if you...
You're not gonna see both sides.
Unless it was mounted...
How is it gonna be mounted?
So on like a metal post.
Okay.
So we won't do...
Well, it wouldn't be double-sided, but you could do one side on each.
Yeah, you'd have to double.
If you were doing like a intersection.
You could double, double bracket.
Okay.
I'll talk to Robbie about that, and let him...
Okay.
Excuse me, are these signs gonna be like the political signs that we have, where we're gonna do the smaller?
No, it'll be like the hand sanitizer size.
And, yeah, let's see if, hopefully makes a difference. It's a good starting point.
Okay.
All right, so you'll work with Rob about getting this implemented?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Shouldn't take too long to get those printed up. All right, so next item on our agenda is an update regarding the heavy commercial vehicle exclusion, and Mark and Liz, you two were taking the lead on this one.
Yes.
You wanna start it, should I?
It's up to you.
So, it's fine.
Okay.
So, that's the goal. We tried a while ago and ran into some technical difficulties. The goal ideally would be to exclude truck traffic from all roads, and heavy truck traffic from all roads in Plimpton, other than the numbered state highways. One of the problems we had when we tried this two years ago was we were informed that we had to get permission from neighboring towns if, if our, the roads that we excluded would put more traffic onto neighboring towns. In looking more closely at the DOR, DOT regulations, there is an exception which says that you don't need permission from other towns if the trucks are gonna be directed only to state numbered highways. Old Colony Planning Council has told us a little differently, so we have to work on that, see if we actually do need permission. While seeking clarification on that, I did meet a couple weeks ago with the Halifax Town Administrator, laid this out. He was a really neat man to get to meet, and he was very sympathetic to our situation, and felt like he would have no problem with this. He did say that police chief, fire chief, highway person did have some concerns and would like some sense of how much increased traffic might be, would be involved. In, in working with Old Colony, we do find that we would have to go through another traffic study, a one-day study on the roads that we were thinking of excluding. They do have the technology to discern the number of cars, the number of trucks. Out of that, we would be able to presumably make some estimate and report to Halifax and potentially other towns on that. So those are the things underway, waiting for a traffic study, waiting for clarification on whether we actually need surrounding town permission. And I, I hope we can make this happen.
So, can I ask a question? So would that exclude traffic from like Mayflower Road? Truck traffic?
No.
Because it's not a numbered road?
Yes, if it's not a numbered, the thing that's tricky is Route 80, don't, Route 80 from Kingston Inn is a route with a number, and I don't know what happens with that.
It doesn't, it's not a route in Plimpton.
No.
It runs from Sacred Heart, or beyond Sacred Heart...
Yeah.
Comes up, then makes a right to go to Kingston.
Okay, good.
And if you, there's a sign at either end that says Route 80, west, south, ending, beginning. So I, I don't think it can just be numbered routes, because certainly, you can't take it away from one road unless you could have an alternative.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and we don't have an alternative for Mayflower. But certainly Main Street...
But how do you, you have to have some exceptions in there?
Some what?
For some exceptions for trucks that still need to come...
Yeah, sure. Deliveries, places of business, all that continues. And I actually, I didn't bring it with me, I did my own little study of, let's say you don't use Prospect Street to come into town, but you stay on 44, and then come down 58, and I, the additional amount of time is relatively minimal. You know, it's three or four minutes sometimes, a couple of miles, it's not a big deal, and I, I was much more comfortable with that. I checked out them all, on all sides, and in no cases is it a major amount of time. I, you know, it would take people getting used to it.
Yeah, it's the same with, you know, people that are going to the industrial park, I mean, they could go down 58, hop on 44, and then get off at Spring Street.
Yep, exactly, and I mean, there's no, I mean, the one that's the worst of the bunch is coming in on Main Street. I mean, here's this old residential town, all these old colonial houses, and, and you know, to save two minutes, they're all turning off 106 and coming down Main with big trucks. And that one, that one drives me stark raving crazy, actually.
The big thing too is, if we get this passed, then we're gonna ask the companies to reset their GPS, and that's what'll really take the bigger trucks off. Because the ones, the drivers half-time don't know Plimpton at all.
No.
You look at these big trucks coming to pick up the well water, they're not even sure where they're going. I see them turn around down by Colchester trying to find their way down.
Yeah, well, they're queued up at Norrie's too, because they can't start until late. Yeah, and I wonder if we could put a sign, like to Route 44 at Brook and Spring, to keep people from going down Mayflower and taking a left onto Main Street to, or onto 58 to get to 44, because I don't think there's a sign there for 44. Is there?
I don't know.
I don't think there is.
Say it again, going, going...
Going...
We're coming from where?
We're coming from Upland Road.
Upland Road, okay.
Upland Road, you're coming from Brook Street, you're, so you're on Brook Street, and there's that intersection where Colchester Farm is. What about a sign there for 44 that way, and it may keep people on Spring Street rather than continuing down to 58 to 44?
Wouldn't that be quicker for people, anyway?
It would be quicker.
Somewhere in town, there is a sign in one spot that says "to 44" with an arrow.
I think it's down...
But I think it's heading this way going, if I remember it. I've never paid that much attention before.
Put a lot more traffic on Spring Street.
Yeah, put more traffic on Spring Street.
We really don't have much houses on, from there to the town.
To 58?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's houses on both sides. No on, on Mayflower.
The piece down that side that's gonna be tricky is if we have to get permission from Carver.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how sympathetic they would be. I'm thrilled that Halifax seems at least moderately sympathetic.
Do you think it's worth me talking with council again, and sharing the literature that you found?
Yeah, because it's pretty black and white.
I thought that was pretty clear, and I was a little surprised when Old Colony said "no."
That we, right, "no," so that didn't make sense.
I mean, the words, the plain meaning of the words, I know in the business we do, the plain meaning doesn't come up that much. Oh, I don't have any. "The alternate route must meet one of the following criteria: lie wholly within a community making an application." That's not the case. "Lie partially in adjacent community, but only on state highway." I mean, it couldn't be clearer, and there's no asterisk at the end of it. So why don't...
Might I'll go back to council with that.
All right, so more to come.
More to come.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, special town meeting preparations, if any. Do you have anything we need to do?
We're all set for Wednesday evening, and I did post a meeting for you guys, just as a precaution. The finance committee, I posted one for them as well, just in case.
And we're posted for 6:30 or 6:45?
6:30, I believe I posted for...
6:30, and town meeting starts at 7?
Yes.
Okay.
I did reach out to, at the library speakers forum, we had Jason Frazier come and explain the article, and as a result of that, I asked the people to go back and talk to other people, because the big thing in my mind is the quorum. We need 35 people. I also went to the CASA meeting, which was only Sarah Prario and Tara Lorenz, but asked them to reach out to their constituency. They asked for a one-page, which Jason gave us, I've sent it on to them. I don't know whether they've sent that on to their email, you know, support, I hope so, so we'll see.
I hope so too, okay.
I think we'll make the 35, but it's a little scary when there's one article and people don't understand it.
Can we put something on social media tomorrow?
Um, I had something originally, but I'll put something else.
Just, you know, a reminder, because people get busy and forget, and, I mean, really, it should be 20 minutes.
I'll put a reminder.
It does have money implications too. I mean, if, if we go one way, the initial cost is $40,000, if we go another way, it's $135,000.
Right, if we don't get it done in time.
Right, so I think it's important that people understand that, and that, Jason, Jason Frazier does an excellent job of explaining it.
And that wasn't videotaped, was it?
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
I've, we're old, we don't want to be on videotape.
No, I know, but it would be nice if we could like send people the link, if they had questions about it, to Jason's presentation, but...
I know, he's good, he's very good.
Yeah, he is very good. Okay. All right, so anything else for us, Liz, on town meeting?
Nope.
All right. Bree, how about warrants paid? All right. All right, so we've got the minutes from 10:02 that, that Bree sent out. Any changes besides the ones we've already discussed?
Nope.
And given, Bree? Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from 10:02 as amended.
I'll say it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I skipped right over town administrators' updates. Back to Liz.
I was hoping you weren't catching that.
So, we were successful with the grant application that I had submitted with Green Communities for the work at the Old Town House. So that is a grant from the state, from the Department of Energy Resources, in the amount of $39,133, and that will take care of the Old Town House for both heating and cooling there, the mini-split style heat pumps. So we hope that that will solve some of our humidity issues at that building as well. We have a kickoff meeting with the utility providers tomorrow afternoon, so once we get that taken care of, I've already received authorization from the state that we can start spending money and moving forward with that, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That'll be a really nice addition.
Yeah, definitely, that'll be a good project. I worked with John Wilhelmson on filing a CPC application to restore the old entrance here at the townhouse. At first glance, it's, it's a lot of money. I think we might be taking on a very large project, but I think we can see through working with CPC, if there is an appetite for it, even if we had to scale it down somewhat, I think it just becomes a question of getting the most bang for our buck, and is it worthwhile as far as people accessing it and using it as often as you'd want them to be for the dollar figure that, that we came up with, but it's a good first step, anyway.
That's a reasonable analysis.
We're also going to be moving forward with the roof replacement on the oldest part of this building. The funds for that were already appropriated back at town meeting in May, so we have the money in place. Currently, our architect is working on the bid documents, so the plan would be to go out to bid over the winter, have the quotes come in by early spring, and get going on that project. And we've lined up for the next meeting, we have the police department coming in to talk about their traffic safety campaign that they've rolled out, and on November 27th, we have the fire department coming in on some of the recent promotions that Cheryl made in-house, and also Town Properties Committee, John Wilhelmson's coming in to update everybody on some progress with some of their projects. So that's all set.
Mark, go ahead.
And then, in correspondence, this is a process that Lisa Hart has started after word from our auditor. It was one of the best practices, which is for the chair of the board to sign off on expenses that had to get moved from one account to another. So she has a list here from fiscal '23 that the auditor just wanted that signed off, and then for quarter one of fiscal '24. And it's all self-explanatory, it's items like, say for example, when we pay a legal bill, it comes out of the legal line, but then afterwards, anything for Conservation Commission, they've requested that it get moved, the expense be moved from the legal line to their line. So the auditor had just indicated that we should be having the board sign off on it, maybe quarterly, as opposed to piecemeal.
Okay.
So I have those for signature. It doesn't require a formal vote.
Because this has already been done.
Correct, correct.
All right, so I'll sign both of those. Anything else in correspondence?
No.
What, what's the sequence on this, then? How does this get decided, or who decides?
So, in this, for say the legal to Conservation for expenses, the Conservation Commission specifically requested that they handle their own legal expenses, but for ease of paying the legal invoices, a bunch of different projects come on one invoice, so there's no way to pay out of two separate accounts. So we pay all out of legal, and then Lisa transfers that dollar amount over to Conservation.
So Lisa makes the decision, or...
She does, but with the input of myself and whatever board committee department is involved.
I would say two things. I think it's about time we made this a little more disciplined. Normally, in the private industries I've worked for, you have to have an explanation.
So she does require that, but that's on the back end.
Right, but it should be on whatever we're signing. It doesn't have to be more than a sentence or two.
Oh, okay, I can have her include that.
Right, and I would like to see her signature on it, so when we count a sign, we understand that this is at her request.
Maybe I should, why don't I have her to reach out to some of her colleagues in the other towns? There's no need to reinvent the wheel, I'm sure someone has a good form for it.
There is a, yeah.
So we'll put together a more robust template.
I think that would be great.
I think Lisa signing off, I'm not sure, would you be willing to sign off as well?
Sure.
I mean, that way, just a little bit checks and balances it.
We can make it look, yeah.
But Lisa is initiating it, right?
Correct.
So she should be the first signature.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I can sign it before it makes it to you.
Then Christine can sign it.
Yeah, and then we'll be current.
Recons?
Well, yeah, so, okay, so we're current now?
Yes, we're current now, so we're...
All right. So, looks like our next meeting is the 13th, and we've got the police department coming in. I wonder if they could bring Aggie?
Yeah.
Think somebody could bring Aggie?
Oh, we can, let me check for Aggie too.
I have something I want to have.
And we have to put it in the minutes that Aggie showed up.
Okay.
I want Aggie to get sworn in. I do!
She's gonna join the...
I want her to get this, whatever. She's so cute.
I haven't met her yet.
Oh my gosh.
All right, so, why don't we do our raves?
Could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a request for the next meeting. I think you're aware that the Board of Health sent me a letter as a selectman, saying that I had intimidated and berated public health nurse, Pat Iafredi. And I wrote a response, asking them to respond to my letter. I have not received a thing, and this was, from my point of view, was strictly contrived, fabricated story. In fact, I never talked to her, except to say hello that day. So I would like to request that the next Board of Selectmen open meeting, and I would like this done in an open meeting, a discussion take place on the Board of Health's interaction with the Town Properties Committee and the Board of Selectmen. This should be an area where all three groups are working together, and it isn't. And they keep raising issues that say the Town Properties Committee is holding them back, and then implying that there's things going on in the background, like this ridiculous thing about Pat Iafredi. The public nurse is a great asset, she is wonderful. She's got the right personality, she works well with the people, so it's nothing to do with her. But I do think we need to at least open this up and talk about it, so we get it resolved. It can't go on this way. I have had a series of things that have been said to me, and some of them are in writing, I want to resolve it.
Well, it's not on the agenda, John, so we really can't even...
No, I'm not asking...
Vote on it, but you're asking, you want to put this on the next agenda to, and what are you asking for? Are you asking for the, have the Board of Health come in?
Yes.
So you want the Board of Health and the Town Properties Committee to get together with us?
At least the chairs, yeah, to talk through the working relationship.
Would that be better served offline, rather than here, in a selectman's meeting? I think it might be more productive.
You know, I would normally say so, except I have had three written documents, which are open, public documents, saying that I have done these things, I have either harassed or intimidated people. And they never spoke to me, they never spoke to the people who were at the meeting, the Board of Health was not at the meeting, and I was the administrative assistant, and I think it's time we flush this out and say, "No, this can't go on this way." Now, we can do it in an executive meeting... Now, we can do it in an executive meeting, but then it never gets exposed to the public. And since they're writing documents that aren't in the public domain, I feel to protect myself personally, in this case, my wife, but also the Town Properties Committee from these issues that are not true.
I think we'd really have to put it on the agenda for next time to even talk about how we want to proceed with this.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, it has been our tradition that any selectman can ask for any item to be put on the agenda. I, I, I am pleased that your letter in response to the Board of Selectmen is out there and is in the public domain, so that you had a chance to defend yourself and correct the record. I think on sort of a philosophical level, I do wonder if more might be accomplished, not in a, a, a meeting here, but just individuals talking to each other. I, I think I see much more opportunity to make progress, but I, I mean, I do stand by, selectmen get to, get to ask for stuff and put on the agenda. I mean, before that meeting, I would just ask you to think a little further on whether even just starting out with a, a meeting between the principals might be a more productive way. At least consider that.
So I would want somebody from, every time I've had a meeting, the town administrator has been there at my request, unless it was a group meeting. This past one was a group meeting, so it didn't make sense. I think somebody, the chair of the Town Properties Committee should be there. I would ask the town administrator, but, and I think the chair of the Board of Health should be there. And probably the administrative assistant, since she's initiating the written document.
I think that would be a great meeting, but I don't think that meeting has to be done as part of the selectman meeting. And I do wonder if more, if people come in fairly open-minded or at least open-eared to begin with, if that wouldn't be a productive way to start.
I think we're beyond that, Mark. If we could have done that early on, I would have been all for it. There is a history that has to be discussed. It's not like this is a one-off. This actually goes back to 2020.
And, and to some extent there, I disagree, that I'm not sure attacking the history is helpful. I think what would be much more helpful is how do we bring forth more cooperation? Rather than deal with the previous stuff, it's all there. The parties have had a chance to get, you know, their point of view out there and I, the more this meeting is done, in whatever venue it's done, aimed at, how do we move forward more productively?
That may be the outcome, but I disagree with you that the history doesn't matter.
I, I'm not saying it doesn't matter. I'm, I'm saying that it's been hashed out and going to it again isn't necessarily going to bring us toward the goal that we want to get to.
I wonder, I mean, I'd be happy to attend the meeting on our behalf as the chair and meet with the other chairs as you suggest and see if we can get something squared away. Should try that first?
So would I suggest that the chairs and?
Yes.
You're all right with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but I wouldn't, I think it might be better, John, if you weren't there. If you could give, because then we have to post a meeting. And if we have, if we post a meeting, then we might as well all meet.
The issue in my mind is that this is, there is a larger issue working here. And I believe it's about control. And it affects who has what responsibility between the Town Properties Committee, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. That's the underlying issue.
But I think John could present for the Town Properties. You wouldn't necessarily have to be there.
Do you think that we should, if you're not amenable to Christine handling it as the BOs chair, at least temporarily, do you think that maybe we should put on the agenda for the 13th just a simple procedural question of how we move forward? I just don't want you to get too far along tonight where it's not on the agenda. I mean, I think we're okay because it falls, it was other business that came before the board that was unanticipated, but just so we don't get too far along tonight without it on an agenda.
We'll continue this discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, and then you could decide whether you think, whether you're agreeable to, to me representing the board.
I mean, I can represent the board. I'm not afraid of doing that, but since I'm the one who's being.
Right, exactly.
I think that could be very effective if Christine.
If I was there representing the board. But we can think about it. So let's put that on the next agenda then.
Okay, how we want to move forward.
How we want to move forward.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so our next meeting is the 13th, followed by the 27th. We also are meeting this Wednesday at the Denne, starting at 6:30 for the special town meeting. Anybody have any raves they'd like to add? So what we're going to do is we'll do our raves, we will go into executive session and upon completion of executive session, we're going to just adjourn. So everything that is in an open session will be done now and we will be going into executive session and then adjourning directly from there.
I have a rate.
Okay.
So I was approached by Terry Patterson. Terry's wife was Helen, better known as Honey. She was the niece of Elizabeth Denne. And Honey had accumulated and worked on genealogy. And he took me into his house and showed me, they were boxes, I mean, boxes like this. So I've asked the Highway Department to come, come help me move them to the Old Town House, we'll put them in the genealogy. And then the archivist, Martha Burns, will go through them. But I want to give a thumbs up to Terry because they could have been thrown away. And there is, just what I saw was, there's a rich bunch of documents that I think the town will be well-served to have, so.
Oh, that's exciting.
Yeah.
All right, my rave is for Lieutenant Hoffman and him taking the, the lead on us implementing a, a traffic enforcement program and, and how excited I am that, that he's taken this. And I can't wait to hear what he's got in store for us on the 13th and the progress that they make in addressing this issue that is very important to all residents, to get people to slow down on the roads and travel them safely. So that's my rave.
Yeah, here, here on that one. My rave is actually for the truck brake language that we've just decided. I love that it has a please in there rather than, you know, a jackhammer.
You're so nice.
And I, I like that it has the word neighborhood in there because I, I think is also a hook that we are a small residential town and not a major thoroughfare. So I'm glad we made progress on that.
Very good.
Christine was going for the Nike logo.
I don't.
Just do it.
Yeah, just do it, just do it. Yeah, mine was a little donkey one. That's my suggestion.
Was that you?
Yeah, that was me. And I don't know if there was a please in there. No, it didn't have a please there.
The little please in the corner is very nice.
It was a, well, yes. Let's keep it, let's keep it G. Keep clean. All right, so being that we have exhausted our open session meeting, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session, and it's for the purpose of number two, and see you, Mark. And that's to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, including, actually, union as well. So we've got the police union, town administrator, treasurer collector, police chief, town accountant and highway superintendent. So we've got a motion to go into executive session for purpose two. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes? Okay. All right, so John, we can wrap things up.